This meeting of the Clinton Township Board of Trustees to order. I'll have members and guests in the audience rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please, Ms. Meltzer.
Trustee Wade?
Here.
Trustee Matuzek?
Here.
Trustee Kress?
Present.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Here.
Trustee King?
Present.
Treasurer Aiello?
Present.
Clerk Meltzer, here.
Okay, next up on the agenda, in reference to item number six and number seven, I'd like to recognize our attorney, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, it would be my recommendation that both of these items be removed. The reason why is that we were contacted by the attorney who represents both the condo association itself and also all of the various units that face onto 19 Mile Road. And he had requested that this matter be postponed for two weeks. The two-week postponement, in light of his request and the fact that they're representing, he is representing people who have some of the most significant interested and affected property in this matter, I think is appropriate for us to adjourn. I think that it makes sense for us. There's no real impact from the standpoint of a two-week postponement. And obviously, there are some considerations that he's working on from his end that he feels are important enough to ask for the postponement or adjournment. So it would be my recommendation that we vote to approve the agenda with those two items deleted, well, actually, with those two items postponed until two weeks from now.
I'll make a motion on that.
Geez, I have a motion from Treasurer Aiello.
I'll support it.
Supported by trustee Wade?
The agenda isn't accurate. The last meeting was resuming the public hearing for ITC. That's what I had on the last agenda. And somehow, it got misconstrued to this heading, which was not what I had on the last agenda. It was simply a postponement of the continuation of a public hearing so that we could close that out. Any concerned parties, or any affected parties, or any moving parties could have its time to speak. So I don't know who changes. I didn't authorize it being changed to special land use site development. That's not what I had on last month's, or last meeting's agenda. So I think we should continue with the public hearing, just to hear out residents that may have shown up today because it was postponed last meeting. And I see we have a whole couple rows full of ITC and other people. I guess I could ask the chair, how would my agenda item get changed from the last agenda? I'll leave you with that.
To make it accurately reflected, actually, the way it's supposed to be on the agenda.
So when you put something on the agenda, I can change it. If I don't like your wording or something like that, without my consent, you can change my agenda item?
This was done in consultation with the attorney and staff.
Okay, answer my question. So can I change something of yours if maybe Jack and I get together and I don't like your verbiage, I can change it without your consent as you being the person that put it on the agenda last month and it was postponed to this month? So explain to me how that, what the process is. Did I?
It wasn't accurately reflected on the agenda as a public hearing. Public hearing occurred at the Planning Commission level.
I got the language from Mr. Dolan when I put it on there.
Well, then I will refer to Mr. Dolan in order to explain the change, or our planning director, Mr. Thompson.
So but my basis of my question is that anybody can change any other person's agenda item? That's standard practice in your administration? You can do that without consulting me?
If it means correcting it so the record is reflected accurately?
I will be certain to correct your agenda items moving forward.
All right. Anything further, Mr. Kress?
Oh, I got plenty. You go ahead. You were talking to Mr. Thompson.
We have a motion and approval. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Or, excuse me, a roll call.
I do have a comment, sorry. So, you know, I don't know why you weren't notified of that, so...
Well, I wouldn't have allowed it, so...
Well, that's not why you weren't notified. It wasn't about that. You asked the question, how come you didn't know? So that could have been, you know, an oversight.
So hold on, there's an agenda item and it's postponed to the next meeting. You don't alter the agenda item. The agenda item gets postponed to the next meeting. And somebody overstepped their authority by changing my agenda item. And I want to know who it was, and I want to know what the practice is.
That part was answered. He did tell you who it was. But I'm saying you should have been notified that there was that change, but...
I should have been asked, not notified.
It made the request legal. You know, that was the appropriate base on the professional in that industry, planning and the attorney.
So the planner changed it.
Mr. Dolan, would you like to clarify this issue?
Okay, first of all, the way it's framed, it currently says, "Special Land Use and Site Development Plan Approval for Proposed ITC Shrine Interconnection Project Essential Services Request." What we had done is we had commenced proceedings under the appropriate ordinance. We got to a point where those proceedings were not finished and we wanted to move them to another date. So what we were doing was we were acting to resume the proceedings. Technically, you're correct in that they were not a public hearing in the sense that a public hearing is something that's provided within the Act as a process called a public hearing. And under the site plan ordinance, which is somewhat incorporated by reference in the essential services ordinance, because we follow those standards, there is that part of it. And that happened at the Planning Commission. But this was a resumption of proceedings that, and it's, there was a, that was the intention from the last meeting, that it was to be a resumption of proceedings.
Yes.
I don't recall the verbiage right here specifically. I don't remember seeing it until the agenda came out, but...
But, Mr. Dolan, it's the same issue, is it not? And the, there's virtually no practical difference between what occurred, what was postponed from the last meeting to this meeting?
The intent was to resume the proceedings under the essential services ordinance. That was the purpose of postponing. We were going to come back and continue the hearing. We've now got a motion before you, which is basically us acting on the agenda on a motion to remove it. I'm just showing, the previous heading on it was, "Resume Hearing on Essential Services ITC Involving High Voltage Poles and Wires." That was the previous heading.
Yep.
This heading now is, "Special Land Use and Site Development Plan Approval for Proposed ITC Shrine Interconnection Project Essential Services Request." There really, there's no question that they each say a different thing, but what we're doing is, in each case, we're going back to the proceeding that we started under that essential services ordinance. So there's a substantial identity in that, although the verbiage is different.
Okay. Well, I like to...
I'm sure I'm clearing this up.
I understand there's a first and a second, but I'd like to explore censuring whoever took it upon themselves to change it without my consent. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Okay, wait a second. Who made the motion? I apologize.
It was moved by Treasurer Aiello, supported by trustee Wade.
Thank you. Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzek?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
No.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to item number one, the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Clerk Meltzer, supported by trustee Matuzek. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, excuse me, a roll call.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Matuzek?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item number two, supervisors' update. So the reason why I wanted to do this is there is a lot of stuff going on within the township, a lot of great events that pull folks together. And so the first thing I want to mention is that the Clinton Township Police Department has an honor guard that attends ceremonial functions on behalf of our community and supporting law enforcement throughout the area, even going so far as to attend, you know, ceremonial events in, you know, sometimes other states. So making sure that they honor the contributions of law enforcement. And to support the honor guard, on April 22nd, at the Mirage Banquet Hall, they will once again be hosting their annual spaghetti dinner from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Tickets are $15 for adults, $10 for seniors, $7 for children, 6 to 12, and kids under five eat free. And to obtain tickets, call 586-493-7800, extension 7836. On the 30th, which is Wednesday, I believe, we will have a roads forum. So the number one issue that I hear from residents is the condition of subdivision streets. Road funding in Michigan comes from car registration fees and gas taxes, and some state government general fund transfers. That money is then distributed out to local communities via a state law that determines if you're a city or a village, you receive money directly from that fund. If you're a township, those funds are distributed to the Macomb County Department of Roads, who then has jurisdiction of all funding and roads, and public roads within townships. So I chaired a committee as an outgrowth of a Clinton Township strategic plan. And we invited now trustee Matuzek, who was then a county commissioner, and we put together a multidiscipline group to explore how road funding works, how these dollars are distributed, how we can compete better for them, and how we can allocate our money better. So we are the recipient of some federal infrastructure funds from the previous administration. That has allowed us to exponentially meet the match requirements that are imposed on us by the state funding formula, also known as Public Act 51 of 1951. When you think about the main roads that we've done, so Hull Road, 18 Mile Road, 19 Mile Road, Cass, with Garfield, Hayes, Grossbeck, Grashit, with 15 Mile Road and...
Kelly.
Yeah, Kelly was done, 15 Mile Road is on tap, and so is Harper. So with all of those road projects, we're trying to turn our attention towards subdivision streets. Because here's what we found out. Out of 204 public subdivision streets, excuse me, 204 miles of public subdivision streets in Clinton Township, more than 122 of those miles are ranked poor to failed. That's an intractable problem that we're facing. However, there are some new programs from the County Department of Roads. And for the first time in my lifetime, I'm seeing the state legislature focus in on providing local road funding. However, it has to get passed. And so the governor has a plan, the House has a plan, and the funding sources are competing. They're different funding sources. And so the message that we've been trying to deliver throughout our community is that if we want our subdivision streets fixed, we all can be part of the solution. We all have the ability to lobby our state legislators to say, this isn't going to be done the way the governor wants it. It's not going to be done the way the House folks want it, but it does require compromise because it does need to get done. And so on April 30th, we're having a roads forum at the South Branch Library, Clinton Macomb Public Library, South Branch, on 15 and Grashit. And that is going to be held from 6:30 to 8:30. And I'm encouraging people to come out to the event, learn how by working together we can fix our local roads within our community. Next up, Paper Products Drive. So I've maintained that with my colleagues here and with the public, the contributions that we make is not just what we do here at the board table. It is a number of things that we can do to make an impact within our community. And so I had a friend who has a business on Grashit. He's talked with folks from Turning Point and Secondhand Rose. For those of you that don't know, Turning Point is an organization that helps survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking and very insecure situations. And so when we asked Turning Point, what is it that they need? One of the things, as they're working to help this group of folks, is they need paper products, paper plates, napkins, paper towel, toilet paper, Kleenex, those types of things. And so we put together a drive. We have a pre-Mother's Day event on May 10th, which is a Saturday, at Secondhand Rose, which is Turning Point's thrift store location on the east side of Grashit between 15 and 16, from 10 o'clock to 1:00. Now, we know that there are plenty of folks that aren't going to make it out on that day, so we have early collection sites, one of which is here at the township in the main lobby, and the insurance company, the Schneid Insurance Agency on Grashit on the west side, also between 15 and 16. Next up, I want to mention that last week was the ribbon cutting of the much anticipated inclusive playground here on the grounds of the Civic Center. The project is not only an example of how government's supposed to work, it's a shining example of the great things we can do by working together as a community at the various levels of government to accomplish great things. And so we encourage people to come on out. This is a park that is designed for everybody, but it was built to accommodate the needs of everyone in our community, regardless of their ability, whether it be cognitive or physical ability. So I want to encourage people to come on out for that. And then lastly, is a legal opinion by our township attorney regarding a false accusation that was made against six of the seven board members. And I'll ask the clerk to read that legal opinion.
Dear Supervisor Gilliam, as you will know, Mr. Bouchelle specifically requested to know what actions has each board of trustee taken to stop any further backroom sites being approved by employees without board action. Supervisor Gilliam subsequently issued a letter in consultation with the township attorney asserting that Mr. Bouchelle had completely misread and misapplied the township ordinance, specifically Section 1298.04. Because Mr. Bouchelle requested a reply by each board of trustee, Supervisor Gilliam permitted the board members to review the response and sign it if so declined. This did not occur at a meeting or gathering of a quorum of the members of the board of trustees. There was no meeting that took place with a quorum of board members. There was also no deliberations. Adding one signature to the letter was completely optional, and in fact, not all trustees signed it. This was not a deliberation of a pending decision, but rather a response to a question involving previous action of the township. The Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.262/PRB, defines a meeting as follows. Meeting means the convening of a public body at which a quorum is present for the purpose of deliberating toward or rendering a decision on public policy. The Open Meetings Act defines decision under MCL 15.262/PRD as a decision, a determination, action, vote, or disposition upon a motion, proposal, recommendation, resolution, order, ordinance, bill, or measure on which a vote by members of the public body is required and by which a public body effectuates or formulates public policy. Individual board members offering their opinion at the request of constituent on whether they think a past act was proper without convening as a quorum or deliberating is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. To hold otherwise suggests that a reply to a citizen request for comment would require a board meeting for every quest or question with all the expense of notice posting, et cetera. This would be unduly burdensome. In furtherance of this legal opinion, the Michigan Court of Appeals case, Stover versus Appc, number 228231, decided on May 28th of 2002, confirms that no violation of the Open Meetings Act occurred. In the Stover case, the court held that no violation of the Open Meetings Act occurred where a letter was prepared by the township attorney and circulated to board members who had then approved the letter's contents for release. The court rejected that such a response is any type of unlawful round-robining. The court found that the township board members were not debating or deciding public policy when they approved the contents of the letter. In a similar way, Mr. Bouchelle first incorrectly asserts that the township failed to follow its ordinances, and then claims that the response to his incorrect assertions by six of the seven current board members was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Like in Stover, a response to false allegations of improper prior conduct was prepared, and some board members signed it in response to Mr. Bouchelle's request. As in Stover, this response did not involve deliberating, debating, or deciding public policy. Further, under People versus Whitney, 228 Michigan, appellate 230/1998, proof must exist beyond a reasonable doubt of an action, of an actual intent to violate the Open Meetings Act. Because there was inter alia, alia, however you say that, no meetings and no deliberations in drafting, the response, no violation of the Open Meetings Act occurred and no secrets were hidden from the public. In our legal opinion, it is improper for Mr. Bouchelle to request the feedback of all board members and then libelously circulate claims on social media that the response is a violation of the law. His alleged violation is both incorrect and improper. It is our legal opinion that no violation of the Open Meetings Act has occurred. Very truly yours, York Dolan and Tomlinson, attorneys for the township.
So this issue was brought to the police department. The police department appropriately looked at it, determined that there wasn't a violation, sent a letter, and the letter said, "If you find more information that you think might actually be a violation, send it over to us." When the social media stuff started to follow, this going back and forth, they appropriately then said, "Take this to the sheriff's department so there's no conflict of interest, and you cannot falsely claim that the police department isn't doing their work." So with that, I close my public comment, the supervisor's update, and, oh yeah, and one other thing. Matt Makowski is our longtime director of the senior center. And Matt, after 28 years of dedicated service to this community, has announced his retirement, and we want to wish him well, and we want to thank him for the outstanding service that he's delivered to our community throughout the year. So with that, we will close this item. It doesn't require a vote, so...
You mentioned his name. Can he speak to it?
Mr. Bouchelle, would you like to speak on this issue?
I have more than three minutes, yes. There again, in fact, I brought the, as our attorneys, who both electronically signed that letter, I brought the actual drawings from the building department. And there again, as you both know, this is, as you all know, this is the Hagleying project, and rebuilt. And as a citizen, if I wanted to add these things out in front, including the covers over the doors, I would have to go to the ZBA, and I'm sure that trustee King can, as a ZBA member, can confirm that that's what I would have to do. Also, this particular property fronts on two major roads, which means that the front yard setback set required to both sides. So this property, the letter that you all signed, other than trustee Kress refused to sign it, and I'm pretty sure I know why, it's a matter of, you all know that that letter falsely stated that no, oh, it didn't, falsely, it truly stated that no variances were administratively approved. And that means that the variances that were required, and there were several new variances, and there again, that these, you know, your own drawings show, that means that the board...
Mr. Bouchelle, my update was not about the letter that you received.
Yes, it was.
My update was that the letter that you received with six of the seven board members signing on to it is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act according to our attorneys and our township police department. So what I'm suggesting is that you've had your time on social media casting aspersions on both this board and the township police department, and those assertions are incorrect.
Your assertions from the police department are incorrect also because they just said, they did not want to use other bosses, and they felt they had a conflict of interest. And they took three weeks to do that.
Mr. Bouchelle, they also sent you a letter that said...
Other than that, the letter that you signed...
The letter that the police department said, "If you find information that somehow suggests that this is a violation, let us know."
Well, I've actually...
But basically, that is a form letter, and that form letter is basically telling you that no violation had occurred.
In all actuality, I took the time then to spend the $10 to pull up, you know, to get the report, and all of the information that was provided, which was, there again, many, many pages of, was all removed from the report.
Okay. Mr. Bouchelle, keep your comments to the issue that was mentioned, that is on the agenda.
Our attorneys stated in their letter that there was no violation of the Open Meetings Act because no deliberations were made. In all actuality, by the fact that the letter that you all signed said that no administrative variances were granted means that the variances that were done, yous were actually approving that site plan with the variances. Because it has a bunch of variances, it's very provable, you've got your drawings that were in the building. And so actually, yous were deliberating in the fact that you were approving a whole bunch of variances, that I, as a citizen, if I want to put something like this over my front porch, I've got to go to the ZBA and I got to beg. And that's ridiculous. And I, you know, our attorneys, you know, you're shaking your head, that's fine, and smile, that's fine. We're going to see if this will work out.
Mr. Bouchelle, I will stand by the comments in the letter, and I will stand by the comments tonight and our attorneys that have indicated to you that this is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
And there again, it's kind of funny because I wasn't going to do some things, but some things were around the record, even at the budget ways and means that are probably now going to come up into this as I have to go to the state attorney general. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Bouchelle, I had a question for Mr. Bouchelle, if I can, please.
Ms. Meltzer.
So you had stated that you knew why trustee Kress did not respond, why, or did not vote on that. Why is that? You said you knew why that was. You thought...
I said, I assumed.
Yeah, you said you thought you knew. What do you think, what do you think you know? That's what I wanted to know.
I don't have, certainly, I wouldn't tell people that I think are liars what I would assume. Thank you.
Yeah, so he didn't answer the question, but...
Yes, I did.
That closes that issue, and we will move on to resolution recognizing April 20th to 26th as Volunteer Week in Clinton Township.
Okay, volunteers are an important part of the fabric of our township. It is the pleasure of every Clinton Township board member and department director to work alongside our volunteers at our many events and with them in our communities to bring proposals to this board that will benefit all of Clinton Township's residents. Without volunteers, our township would not be the great place we call home. And I'm going to read the resolution recognizing National Volunteer Week in Clinton Township. Whereas National Volunteer Week is an opportunity to recognize and thank volunteers who lend their time, talent, voice, and support to causes they care about in their community. And whereas volunteers can serve to inspire others to find ways to take actions that create change. Whereas National Volunteer Week, we celebrate the impact of volunteer service and the power of change makers to come together to tackle tough challenges and build stronger, more vibrant communities. And whereas National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 and has grown exponentially each year with thousands of volunteer projects and special events scheduled throughout the week. Whereas the Charter Township of Clinton is very proud to honor hundreds of volunteers who give thousands of hours annually for the township. And be it resolved that the Board of Trustees for the Charter Township of Clinton hereby recognizes the week of April 20th to the 26th, 2025, as National Volunteer Week, which coincides with National Volunteer Week, and celebrations and events that are acknowledged throughout the state of Michigan in the...
the state of Michigan and the United States. And, Mr. Supervisor, there is a young woman in the audience who has volunteered in our community, and I know her only by her first name, Maya?
I think, I think that's on number four.
Oh, is that number four?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So I think we're on number three, which is approving the resolution. And we need a motion and support.
I'll support.
Moved by Treasurer Aiello and supported by Trustee King. Discussion on the resolution. Roll call.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Crest?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay. Item number four, recognition of committee members and event volunteers for the township.
Okay. In honor of National Volunteer Week, April 20th to the 26th, the Clinton Township Board of Trustees recognizes former committee members whose appointments ended in 2024. Certificates of appreciation were mailed prior to the board meeting scheduled for Monday, April 14th. We are pleased to honor the following former committee members. Name Lucy Riley from the Board of Review, Frank Pizzo, also Board of Review, Robert Hogan, posthumously, from the Compensation Commission, Daris Lannick from the Compensation Commission, John Stroh from the Conservation Committee, Spencer Calhoun, Conservation Committee, Scott J. Chabot, or Chavitt, sometimes they call him, Mr. Chabot, we love him very much, he works so hard for our community, Conservation Committee, Daniel Marr, Board of Ethics, Marnet Cobb, Housing Commission, William White, Housing Commission, Deanna Jansen, Planning Commission. And certificates of appreciation were also mailed to volunteers and appointed committee members who have so generously volunteered their time and service in the following events and committees, and those include the Arboretum, Friends of the Arboretum, Community Blood Drive, Compensation Commission, Conservation Committee, Board of Ethics, Grashit Cruise Committee, Historical Commission, Housing Commission, Inclusive Playground Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Recreation Department Events, Senior Adult Life Center Events, and Water Advisory Council.
Do we have any of the folks mentioned in the audience with us today? All right. Ma'am, can you come forward?
And Maya, too? Do you want to come forward?
No, stand up, come forward.
Can you, yeah, yeah, come on, come on. So tell us your name and tell us what you worked on.
Deanna Jansen was on the Planning Commission.
Great.
Thank you.
And they, oh, but don't go back, don't go back.
Hello, my name is Maya Nader, and I helped with the seniors over there for Halloween.
Awesome.
Great.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Gabriella Darga, and I did the summer camp thing, I don't know.
Well, great.
I don't know.
Standing ovation for the three of you and all of our volunteers. We need a motion to receive and file.
Mr. Supervisor?
Trustee Metuzak?
The Prince Jury Advisory Committee was left off the list of...
We can make that correction.
I thought you could.
We can, and we will do so as soon as possible. Thank you.
Motion?
Motion received and filed. Moved by Treasurer Aiello, supported by...
Trustee Metuzak?
Trustee Metuzak. A roll call, please.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Crest?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to item number five, special land use approval for proposed resale shop fronting the west side of Grashit, south of Hull Road. Is the petitioner in attendance? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to read the agenda item, and then we want to hear from you.
Special land use approved for the resale shop, is that what?
Trustee.
The commission has made review of the request for special land use approval and finds the proposed use meets the special land use standards of the zoning code and hereby make recommendation for approval of the proposed special land use. This section was approved by unanimous vote and with one excused absence, and this matter was petitioned by Brandon Smith. We submit this proposal for consideration and would appreciate advisement of your determination. Sincerely, George Sasson, Clinton Township Planning Commission Secretary.
Mr. Smith, you want to tell the board and the public, because these meetings are televised, about your new endeavor?
Yeah, so I clean out houses for a living and a lot of commercial properties, and there was a lot of good stuff that was being thrown away, and I decided to take the opportunity to, instead of trying to throw it away, to open up a resale shop to get the used and new items out to, you know, the public and to, you know, keep our landfills clean.
Okay.
I figured it'd be a good idea, instead of trying to go to the higher stores and pay an astron, you know, astronomical amount, keep the prices down lower, and make, you know, families happy.
Okay.
For whether it's people that are starting over, divorces, you know, domestic violence, people trying to move forward with their life, give people, you know, a better chance and a new start.
Let me wish you best of luck on this endeavor.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Crest?
Are you going to keep everything within the walls of the store?
Yes.
Your promises that you won't put anything on the sidewalk, roadside?
Yes, I promise.
Easement or anything like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Further questions from the board?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Moved by Trustee Metuzak, supported by Treasurer Aiello. Roll call, please.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Crest?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Best of luck.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number six and item number seven were removed. That brings us to item number eight, introduction of paving inspection procedures and ordinance changes.
Dear members of the board, the Department of Public Services is proposing changes to the procedures for inspecting paving work performed in the township. Currently, the ordinance, the ordinance is mandate that inspection fees be charged and inspections conducted for all paving work. This means that the same fees and inspection requirements apply to new paving installations as well as to rehabilitation work on existing pavements. As a result, these fees can be cost prohibitive for some property owners who need to make essential repairs to maintain their paving. To address this issue and make repairs more financially feasible, the DPS has conducted an investigation and consulted with the Budget Ways and Means Committee along with the township attorney. The proposed ordinances are designed to create less burdensome procedures and fees specifically for maintenance paving work. While these changes would still require the standard inspection fees and processes for new paving projects and major reconstructions, they aim to reduce the number of inspections and lower the fees associated with maintaining existing pavements. This approach strives to support property owners in keeping their paving in good condition without facing excessive financial barriers. Thank you for your consideration of our request, and I am happy to provide any future or further information or clarification you may need. I look forward to your favorable response. Sincerely, Brett Middlestead, Assistant Project Manager for the Department of Public Services.
I'll turn things over to either Department Director, Ms. Bednar, or Chair of the Budget Ways and Means, Trustee Metuzak, if there's anything further feeling needs be added.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Norman.
Yes, if the board chooses, they can use a, because there are three ordinances, you can vote on them separately, or you can vote on them together unless there is some concern about each individual ordinance.
And I'll just say that they are very interrelated, you know, one change is made to one ordinance and another change is made to another to correlate to each other. To correlate to each other, and it is just for today, is just for introduction and publication, not actual adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Pleasure of the board. Take them separately or as a, as a unit?
As a bundle.
As a bundle?
I'll make a motion to adopt, or, I'm sorry, not adopt, to introduce and publish both ordinances.
Reordnance.
All three. All three, I apologize, yeah.
All three ordinances.
I'll support.
Okay, moved by Clerk Meltzer, supported by Trustee King. Discussion from the board?
Mr. Supervisor?
Trustee Metuzak?
This has come before budget ways and means twice for sort of a thorough examination of what we're trying to do. The, the main purpose is to, if someone just, if a business just wants to redo, resurface their parking lot, they're not digging it up, they're just, they may do a mill and fill, they may fill the cracks, they may do that sort of stuff. Our current ordinance is quite expensive, it requires a, an inspector be on site, and we think in some cases it actually keeps business owners from maintaining their parking lots, and we want the parking lots maintained. And so if you're just doing a little bit of work, that we think you ought to be able to come in, explain the work, the owner of the business has to come in and sign off on this work because we were worried that...
Meaning the owner of the property?
The owner of the property.
Yep, okay.
That occasionally unscrupulous contractors come, say they're going to do one thing and then do another much smaller thing, and if we're not going to have someone there inspecting, then we want to make sure that the owner knows what's going on, approves the work, and if there's a problem, we will obviously come and inspect it. But for folks who jost, businesses that just need to maintain their parking lot in a more reasonable fashion, this will reduce their costs and we hope encourage them to keep up with their parking lot. If somebody's going to dig up their parking lot and start from scratch, then they need the full inspector and the full, they have to pay the full fee, and we have to see really what's going on because underneath that parking lot, there may be other utility structures. So I would recommend approving this. Like I said, it's come to budget ways and means twice. Came the first time, there were some questions, it went back, people thought about it some more, and it came forward, so.
Okay. I appreciate that explanation. Further questions from the board? Trustee Crest?
So are we eliminating all inspections? I mean, let's say, for instance, that party store wants to patch their parking lot or put a cap on their parking lot, is there zero inspections now?
If I can explain that, what will happen is they need, they need to submit an application showing exactly what type of work they're going to do, we review it. If it is as simple as fixing a couple slabs of concrete or just putting a cap on it, then there will not be an inspection on it. However, as Trustee Metuzak said, the property owner will have to sign off saying they're aware of what they're doing and so forth. If you do a major reconstruction, meaning you go down to the base of the parking lot, or you are redoing up, or you're doing a new parking lot, so like new development would still require a full inspection.
Okay, so we have no way of monitoring if it's substandard repairs? And secondly, are we, because we're not inspecting it, does that make us liable because we've opted out of inspections? Does that put us on a slippery slope?
Got it. We specifically put waiver provisions in the application that has to be signed off on and within the ordinance so that anybody who is going without having an inspector there has agreed not to have an inspector there and is waiving any rights that he or she may have had. And then, of course, you have governmental immunity and other defenses that we would have.
If I could just add, this is similar to what some other communities do, most communities don't even do this because it's private property, and they don't require any inspections, but other communities like Washington Township, Macomb Township, ourselves, do at least require this minimum.
Yeah, well, I'd like to, myself, I'd like to see a before and after inspection just so we know that what was fixed and that it was fixed well. I understand, I don't want somebody sitting in a pickup truck watching them all day, but I feel there should be some function of inspection, not just, you know, letting whoever it is do the work. That's concerning to me, and that's what I have to say.
Further comments from the board? From the public? Mr. Bouchelle?
There again, having been at the Ways and Means both times that this was discussed, I was pretty shocked that I even wrote emails to each of you guys saying, you know, this is also for private roads and for condo associations, and the biggest benefit to the township was the fact that it removes liability to the township and that buyer beware, and so it's a matter of a condo association, the people probably aren't aware of even what they're doing. It's a matter of, this basically, we have a township to assure values across the township, basically to maintain the values of the township. Getting rid of all the inspections and taking away the liability and, you know, in public parking lots, if what's done is substandard, it could cause accidents, it could be a health risk, and I think this is a very bad idea just for the sheer fact that it, and there again, homeowners have to realize, this doesn't go after any homeowners, it doesn't affect anybody that lives on a, on a public road, but if you live on a private street and your street gets, you know, you have some unscrupulous contractor come in and say they're going to do one thing, the township's not liable and they're not having any of their trained professionals that we pay their salaries to come and watch what's going on to protect the validity of your, you know, of the money you're spending. And it's a matter of, a home can get stuck for a huge amount of money, but a condo association could get stuck for way more and have no protections. You're paying taxes for a township, a lot of taxes, and I think you should have the, the inspections I think are critical, and the attorney is raising his hand, so have a good one.
No, I just wanted, we had this discussion, and the chairperson of the committee is looking over at me, the concern of Mr. Bouchelle was discussed, and as Ms. McGrail indicated, included in the application form is basically a notification to the owner, and that's why we want the owner to sign it, that there is a risk and that the inspection is available. So it's up to the owner as to whether or not they want to avail themselves of the inspection and pay the cost of it. So we're taking something that was a cost that they had to pay, turning it into something that they may choose to pay if they so desire, but otherwise, if it's what we consider to be a less large scope work, that they, they can avoid paying.
Ms. Bednar, how expensive were those inspections? I mean, there were, there were people that opted not to repave their parking lots because of it, correct?
Correct. We've had people, as well as condominium associations that have private roads, have opted not to do their roads or their parking lots because of those inspection fees can be quite expensive. It's, it's a graduated scale how it works, and it starts, I believe, at 8% of the project for smaller projects, and then it goes down from there, so it can get quite expensive. And what I've heard from many private roads, condominium associations was, well, that's $10,000, that I could have done more on my road, or that's, you know, I could do more on my, my parking lot, so forth. It's similar, you know, I actually spoke with Barry Miller, when you go and replace shingles on your roof, you do not require an inspection on your roof. When you replace your roof, you're supposed to get an inspection on your roof, and when you build your new house, you get an inspection on your roof. So those, it's very similar. So when you're replacing shingles or a little bit of concrete here and there, it's not going to be required, it's only when you go to replace the roof or replace the entire concrete parking lot or driveway, or, excuse me, road, private road.
Further discussion from the board? We need a motion to, oh, we have a motion already?
We do, and a second.
We have a motion and a second?
To combine all three ordinances. And to introduce and publish.
Introduce and publish.
Uh huh.
A roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Crest?
No.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee, Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number nine, Metro Act Permit Request, Open Fiber Michigan.
Dear board members, the Clinton Township Clerk's Office received a Metro Act Permit Request from the Ripple Fiber on March 5th, 2025. AEW reviewed the submitted documents and informed the applicant that additional information was needed for the submittal. AEW was not, has not received the following information to make a recommendation for approval on the permit submittal. The bullet points are as follows. Formal exhibit drawing for the routing map required in the bilateral agreement include a schedule of the work and phasing map with anticipated start dates, details of all potential structures or typical infrastructure, clarification on which entity will be providing utility plans for engineering review, indicate if a contractor has been selected for this work in Clinton Township, steps being taken to identify private lead locations and utilities in easements and public right-of-ways, assurances that bonds will be provided during the construction, and outline the pre-construction process and how Clinton Township DPS will be notified of work and the expected scale of missed dig requests. The Metro Act guidelines state that a determination for permit acceptance or rejection must be made within 45 days of receipt of the request. Since we have not received... Since we have not received the requested information, we recommend a formal denial from the Township Board for this Metro Act Permit Request. Once we received approval information and have sufficient time to review their submittal, with Clinton Township Legal Counsel and DPS staff, we will be able to bring this Metro Act Permit Request back to the Township Board. Sincerely, Scott Chabot, Senior Project Manager with AEW.
So Mr. Dolan, to satisfy the timeline, we have to vote on this within the 45 days, correct?
Correct, yes.
And so at this point, based upon the recommendation, it's most likely a motion to deny.
I'll make a motion to deny.
That's correct. If I may, Mr. Chairman.
By all means.
The, one of the things that I did see was a photograph of the type of cabinetry that they're proposing to install above ground. And I think you want to make sure that they provide renderings, basically actually photographs would be better of anything above ground, because the structure that I saw, or the cabinet, rather, was probably about four and a half, five feet tall, and it probably would best need some screening. So screening on, providing imagery of the, imagery and location of the above-ground structures and screening, I think would also be something that we didn't expect to see.
You, do you need that as part of the motion?
Yes.
And so just what, now the, if we deny this tonight, and they want to come back with the information that has been requested, do we have to rescind this vote, or does the process just start over again?
In, in the past, what I think we've been able to do is, I, I think we've been able to simply, basically approve after, I don't think we've actually rescinded our, our previous vote, I think we've just approved that with the new submittals being a, a new proposal.
So we would consider it, in a sense, a new application at that point?
Right. You're acting on a new presentation because you've got this additional material.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Meltzer?
Support. To deny, but to.
Motion to deny.
But when they do bring it back, to include the, within that motion, those items that, that the attorney delineated.
And the letter indicates.
Uh huh.
And the letter.
Yes, as, as well as the letter, yeah.
I support that.
So it's been moved by Clerk Meltzer, supported by trustee Matuszak, to deny the application. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Matuszak?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Ayello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number 10, Request Adoption of Resolution Designating 2025 Polling Locations, Ms. Meltzer.
Thank you. So we recently did consolidate these polling locations, and once submitted to the Bureau of Elections, we learned there was some additional issues that existed as a result of the independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. There were some voters in four households, there was a total of seven voters, registered voters, in four households that were not correctly assigned to the proper precinct for the Senate race, and it also included a school district. So we had to make those corrections on behalf of the state's request, which we did, and so that, that opened up the opportunity also to readdress. Some of the things that we wanted fixed in there were some overlaps that existed in the previous map, or the one that exists right now, that allowed some residents to actually go into a subdivision they wouldn't normally do to go and have to vote. So this kind of cleaned up the ability for people to vote more, in a more familiar way, which they have been voting, and we were able to redistrict those lines to incorporate that capability, so that the public sees less of a change, because quite frankly, people don't like change, right? So, and they want to vote where they normally vote. So in addition to approving this resolution, let me just read the language, and then I have another portion of it, I want you to also approve. The Michigan Election Law Public Act 116 of 1954 provides for the township legislative body to designate and prescribe the polling locations for each precinct located in the township for use at each election. MCL 168.662-PRAN-1 requires designation of polling locations be publicly owned or publicly controlled, buildings or buildings owned or controlled by an organization that is exempt from federal income taxes provided in the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. So these precincts, as presented, are what I'm asking to be part of this resolution. In addition to that, we will have to mail out voter ID cards, which we did previously. These will override the previous ones sent out, and I also want the board to approve using grant dollars from the, grant available from responsible government, the Institute for Responsible Government. There is money left over in that grant, so if we could direct that to pay for the cost of mailing out these voter ID cards, that would mean there would be no cost to the township.
So we need a motion to approve the, the map and, is it a resolution?
The resolution, the resolution.
Along with it, along with approving the grant dollars to be used for the administration?
Correct.
Okay, question, question first? Can I have a question?
Oh, by all means. Trustee Ayello, or trustee treasurer Ayello.
Clerk Meltzer, I understand that the state senate redistricting is kind of in completion at this point. The redrafting of this precinct map, will that carry over into the 2026, or do we have to redraft it again?
No, no, it won't be, have to be redrafted.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion from the board? We need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Treasurer Ayello, supported by trustee Wade. Further discussion?
I got, I got a question.
Step forward, sir. Public participation? Name and address for the record if you.
Paul Short, so I live at 38057 Moravian Drive, ultra mega precinct delegate from the real Republican Party. I did attend that meeting earlier today, and I believe I got the wrong number, all right? It says, that you mailed it to me, it says 12 on here, but on the map, it says I'm number 10. Could I show it to Kim and clarify? Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Well, I think that's something that can be done in, in the office.
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I'm happy to share that with you. Yeah, you might have been looking, you were looking at the new proposed map.
I'm looking at the map, the map that you just gave me?
Yes.
And.
And your voter ID card says what? What precinct are you?
12.
You're 12, and this one will be 10.
Correct.
Uh huh.
So I'm not 12.
Well, as I stated, you will get another voter ID card that shows that correction.
All right.
So this.
Because I was originally 23.
Yeah. We're making a lot of changes, and as we discussed, the reason for these consolidations is because of the valid initiative that forces us to have nine days of early voting. There's a cost to that. It costs Clinton Township $80,000 approximately to execute nine days of early voting. How do we pay for that in the future? In the last election, we had the HAVA money, which was the Help America Vote Act, which is federal funding, but that won't be promised every election. So how do we pay for that mandate that took place in 2022 under Proposition 2, where the public voted for that? Now, we have to execute what they've, they've asked for. So in order for us to do that, there's a cost. And so how do we make up that cost? Well, we can consolidate precincts, meaning we can take more voters on Election Day and vote when, in fact, there probably won't be as many. Some people are concerned that this is forcing people to vote absentee, which it is not. We now, instead of having one day to vote in person, you have 10 days to vote in person. So we, we want to encourage people to do in-person voting and, or absentee, whatever they prefer. It, there's a lot of choices that people have at their disposal. So that's what we're doing.
So, and then you're going to send me another voter card, right?
Yes, and that money, to send that is going to be paid with a grant, not a federal grant, not a state grant, not any type of government grant. It was actually a nonprofit grant that we received, and there's money available in that, so it's not costing the taxpayer any money.
Right, so I'm actually 10 and not 12 or 23.
Well, we'll see. I can't, I, I don't have your address in front of me.
Look in the mail.
Sir, you might want to stop by the clerk's office and they can help clarify.
I think that's something we can talk to, I just want to make sure.
I also know where you live, and I'm pretty sure in this new map, you would be 10.
Right, yeah, that's, right, that's what I'm, all right, thank you very much.
Good question.
Okay.
And thank the citizens for coming.
Okay. Trustee Matuszak?
Just a question. I have had a, a number of folks ask when the new maps, meaning the old map, now we have a newer map, will be available to purchase at the clerk's office.
Once we approve this, I mean, our GIS specialist is usually pretty quick on getting the maps created. I mean, day or two is all it will take to create the maps. But I mean, if there's, if there's interest in getting a map right away, please email me or call me, call our office, and, you know, I'll get on it right away.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion from the board? From the public? We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Treasurer Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matuszak?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Item number 11, Adopt and Publish Fee Ordinance Waiver Provision for Food Truck Ordinance.
Dear Board Members, in an effort of supporting our local schools and community, I would like to request waiving the $75 building department food truck fee for township school events. School events are held for the benefit of the student body or our fundraising, or our fundraising efforts that will assist student extracurricular activities. By waiving the fee, it will ease the financial burden on our schools and ultimately our residents. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Bruce Wade, our Township Trustee. And this, this was introduced at the last meeting, so this would be for adoption and publication.
Trustee Wade, anything you wanted to add on that?
No, it's just that, as we know, the PTOs and the other groups that fund a lot of these things, they, they really have to run a tight budget, so I just thought with them being really good partners with us and the township, that it shows some good faith.
I'll make a motion.
So there's a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Kress. Further discussion? A roll call, please.
Treasurer Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matuszak?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Item number 12, Request Approval for Out-of-State Conference.
Dear Members of the Board, Clinton Township GIS Specialist Magda DeFranco is requesting to attend the Esri User Conference to be held July 14th to the 18th of 2025 in San Diego, California. The registration cost is $2,425 and is complimentary with our annual maintenance subscription. The travel cost of $2,380.65 includes hotel, airfare, and meals are a budgeted item under education and training. The 2025 Esri UC will focus on the power of geospatial technology and how it is being used to analyze and understand trends, risks, markets, and dynamics that impact communities and companies. Geographic Information Systems, or GIS, technology brings together the science of geography with the modern capabilities of data management, analysis, visualization, integration, and collaboration. GIS specialists will have a chance to collaborate and learn in a dynamic environment by attending user presentations and interactive workshops, to meet one-on-one with Esri subject matter experts, to explore the conference expo, to connect with other GIS users and experts, and to, and to be inspired at the world's largest GIS conference. I'm asking for your approval of this out-of-state conference travel request. Respectfully submitted, Mary Bednar, Director of Public Services.
Questions from the board? Trustee Matuszak?
Not a question. We are so incredibly lucky to have Magda DeFranco on our staff, who is a wizard with maps and data and making it all readable. And so I am happy to make the motion to send her to learn even more stuff.
I'll second it.
Been moved by trustee Matuszak, supported by treasurer Ayello. Ms. Bednar, anything to add?
I just want to actually duplicate exactly what trustee Matuszak. Magda is excellent and never says no. I mean, whether it's the precincts map or working on easements, I mean, she can do pretty much anything. Goes into SEMCOG, just amazing, the data that she's able to find. I'll bring her an idea, and I'll be like, I don't know if this data exists, and she says, I'll find it, and she does, so.
And turns it into a map or a chart or something easy to understand.
Turns it into something extremely useful. And I can tell you, I spoke about the Establishing Quality Roadways Committee and the research that we did there, and we, you know, I think trustee Matuszak and I really came to appreciate her expertise during that process, because it was pretty amazing. Oh my goodness, how did you do that? And so she learns these things at conferences. Just want to highlight the fact that the cost of the conference has been provided for free, so we're paying the travel cost.
So trustee Matuszak moved, supported by treasurer Ayello, clerk Meltzer.
Yes, thank you. I just want to also add, this is, the geospatial technology is really important in the election industry, and the state of Michigan is actually working on that, and we were just recently at a conference, and they discussed briefly how important this will be to help maintain voter records. And so there's so much about this that is important, and it's critical that we have an employee that understands it, and she doesn't know it yet, but she will be helping another aspect of the clerk's office when it comes to elections. So this is a, a very important conference, because it's out, out of state, that's the only reason it comes here, it's, that's just part of our ordinance policy, is that any request for out-of-state conferences come to the board for approval, and this is, I definitely strongly support this for her and for the township.
Okay, further discussion? A roll call.
Trustee Matuszak?
Yes.
Treasurer Ayello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay. That was, item number 12, item number 13, Request Approval for Quinn Road Community Club to Obtain a Five-Year Reservation for Prince Jury Park.
Dear Supervisor Gilliam, I am writing today on behalf of the Quinn Road Community Club to request that we be able to reserve Prince Jury Park on the second Saturday of August for the next five years. That is the day our community comes together to celebrate the Quinn Road reunion, and we have been doing so for 39 years. It is an important event for our community. We are happy to pay the fee to use the park, but we would very much appreciate having a permanent reservation in place for future generations. Thank you for your consideration. You can reach me by phone. Sincerely, Cordell Lucas, President of the Quinn Road Community Club.
Discussion of the board?
I move adoption.
Okay. Been moved by trustee Matuszak, supported by clerk Meltzer. Discussion.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Ms. Bednar?
If we could add that that fee shall be paid by one month before the event, so that way, if for some reason they do decide to cancel, I can't imagine after 39-plus years, but if they did, that is a very busy month in Prince Jury Park, and that would open it up for a reservation, but we will hold it up till like the month before. I can't imagine that being a problem.
It's not a problem.
Trustee Matuszak, you want to add that to your motion?
I'm happy to add that to the motion.
I support.
Clerk Meltzer, support.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Just to speak to this, just for a moment, they have canceled once during this time, and it was basically our fault. It was the year we were trying to spread the dirt, and it was all mud, and it was a mess. It's really important that this continues. For those of you that don't really know about Quinn Road, it is one of the oldest African-American communities in metro Detroit during the, my, my quick explanation is during the Great Migration, when folks were moving from the south to the north, the folks that did not want to live in the city, they wanted to raise chickens and grow vegetables and hunt for rabbits, moved to Clinton Township and established a thriving community. That neighborhood included churches and schools and grocery stores and barber shops.
And few homes.
And homes, many homes. It was a thriving community. During the period of urban renewal, the government came in and knocked it all down. They destroyed a neighborhood, but they did not destroy the community. And I think that is what is amazing about this. The Quinn Road community maintains a strong existence, even if it's not all physically there. People come from around the country to come to the Quinn Road reunion. People have moved away, they come back. The Quinn Road community hosts a dinner for seniors from Quinn Road. Most of them don't live there anymore. Their senior housing is around. But I talked to a woman who came from 40 miles away because she needed to continue. Her grandparents always served the meal, and she needed to continue this. So this is a special place. This is a special reunion, and the township, I hope, comes to treasure this area more than it has in the past.
Roll set. Trustee Wade?
I just wanted to add, if you've never been to the Quinn Road reunion, when I was working afternoons, they would always have an open invitation. And if you left your patrol car by more than 10 feet, your plate was already filled with food, and really good food. And it was just a real positive experience and a real good community event. It brought a lot of people together. So totally support having that.
Okay.
Mr. Gilliam, to clarify, this is for approval through 2029, so they'll have to be back in 2030.
They'll manage that.
Okay.
Wonderful.
All right, so we have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matusek?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 14, approval of emergency notification procedures.
This team board attached is a draft policy regarding emergency communications. The policy was developed by a team consisting of police, fire, DPW, CRAMs, emergency management liaisons, the supervisor's office, and myself. The policy outlines what constitutes an emergency requiring public communication, defines who has responsibility for initiating the request for public communication, and who is responsible for determining the appropriate approach to that public communication. It also requires that internal communications occur to ensure that the management team can handle resident inquiries. Your approval of this policy is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Bruce Wade.
Trustee Wade, anything to add?
No, that it was good that we got all the different heads of departments together and got their input. And I think we've got a real good protocol going. Last week with the flooding, there was a little bit of a hiccup with everybody getting these flooding alerts on NICSOL. And I talked to Mr. Purpich about it, and I believe that's been corrected. At least, I hope it is.
Maybe.
Maybe, okay.
So those updates, and I was going to mention this, but I'm glad you brought it up, trustee Wade, because those updates actually come from the National Weather Service. So when I came in in the morning, I saw flood watch until 4:30, flood watch until 7:00, flood watch until 3:30, flood watch until 9:00, then flood watch until 10:00. And so I know it was discussed out there in the atmosphere, but we don't have control over those. We can try to limit them, but we could check a box and turn those off. I don't think that's in our best interest, so.
And just to kind of finish up on this, we have several sites you can go to. It's outlined, and we are going to do a PSA on that, that you can get information from that's not imminent, like roads that are going to be closed, or say, the fireworks are coming, so you know to stay away from Romeo Planck and Canal if you don't want to get tied up in all that confusion going on. But one thing I will say, and I really want to emphasize this with people, is we have to have a way to be able to contact the public in real time. That's paramount. And, you know, with NICSOL, we can reach your phone immediately. And, you know, just not to throw up a bad situation. A couple of weeks ago, there was a shooting at a hospital in Troy, and the suspect was headed right to McComb Township, just across Hall Road. And if you live in that area or you live somewhere close, you need to know about that. And that has to be put out there in real time. So I'm going to really try to encourage, and I hope the other departments do too, for people to sign up for NICSOL. And also with this whole project, Mr. O'Leary was really critical in putting this together. And he deserves kudos for that. He did an excellent job in putting the policy together.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by treasurer Aiello, supported by...
I'll support it.
Trustee Matusek. Okay, I got you, ma'am. Deputy Supervisor O'Leary, if you can come forward, just... So I think there's a couple of distinctions here. First of all, how do people sign up for NICSOL? Because, yes, we can reach your phone, but you have to sign up for it.
Yeah, you do have to sign up. It's www.nixel.com, I believe, and you can do it right there on the website. Or you can go to our website, and there's places on our website on the face of it where you can sign up for NICSOL as well. Or anywhere around Township Hall, there are multiple flyers and other things. We're going to be putting it in pretty much any communication we issue. We're going to have a little thing in there that shows people how to go to NICSOL using their QR code scanner. So you won't be able to miss it if you want it, so please do sign up. It's of very little value to have an emergency notification system if only 5,000 people are signed up in a town of 100,000, so. Then we got to use it. You got to sign up, exactly. You just got to help us out.
And then I want, because I think this is an important distinction, there's an alert and a notification.
Yes.
One is more related to an emergency, the other is related to, hey, we think you ought to know.
Right. And you can choose between whether you want both of those or just one. So if you don't want your phone banging off the hook, we can't do anything about the National Weather Service, unfortunately. They got a little, somebody was drinking coffee at the National Weather Service last week. I don't know.
Kept hitting the buttons.
It was changing constantly. But if we were to turn that off, I talked to Silver with Jim Purpich, our CRAMs manager, director, and if we were to turn that off, we'd be turning off everything from them. And that scares us, because what if there's tornado notifications and that sort of thing? So we felt we had to stick with it, but we're hopeful that they'll relax a little bit.
But so an alert or a notification? Alert tends to be more emergency.
Yes.
A notification tends to be, hey, we just want to make sure you're aware.
You're aware of this, right, exactly.
Mr. Brown?
Trustee Matusek?
What about folks that don't have smartphones?
You can still sign up. You can get a text to even an older-fashioned phone, but it's a little, it's a little liffy.
And if you don't, I mean, how are we notifying folks?
It also does email.
It does email.
And it can even do a voice call if you request it. So those are your three options, text, voice call, and it's like a mechanical voice, and an email. And I know almost nobody that signs up for a voice message. But it's there if you have ancient technology.
If you have, some people don't do that kind of technology, so.
So it's good to have a former police chief on our board. Thank you, trustee Wade, for kind of driving this issue for us. And Mr. O'Leary, thank you for your work on it to help guide it.
Quick question for Mr. O'Leary.
Clerk Meltzer.
Just a real quick question. Can't you contact the National Weather and ask them or make a recommendation to, you know, not throw out these constant notices that are duplicative or contradicting?
Mr. O'Leary, if I could just add that in the past, we haven't got that many. So I believe they're just working out some kinks at this point.
Yeah.
So I think, hopefully in the future, it will be that way. But right now, they're just working out the kinks.
I could stiff around, though, I mean. Thanks.
Okay. So we have a motion by treasurer Aiello? Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, yes. I said I had you, but then I got wrapped up in the conversation, so.
Thank you. Leonella Weir, 35695 Blairmore Drive, Clinton Township. Regarding NICSOL, apparently you do have to have email, though. You can't just have text, because I cannot get on it. I've got, you know, a cheap flip phone, because I don't do all that stuff. And it will not accept, it says to enter 888-777 and text your zip code, and it will not go. And then so Amy, your assistant, she said I need to go in on nicksel.com, but I do have to have, make up an email, just so everybody knows.
Okay, all right, well, that's helpful.
If you could leave me your contact information, I'll make sure I follow up, make sure you got all the information.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we ready for a roll call?
Yes, sir. Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Matusek?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay. Item number 15, fire department staff vehicle budget request.
Honorable board members, I'm ready to request approval to have the budgeted funds of $44,981 for a new staff vehicle from fiscal year 2425 moved forward to this current fiscal year. The original delivery timeframe for the 2025 Ford Explorer utility was for late March 2025, but experienced production delays. The anticipated delivery date is now early May of 2025. I thank you in advance for your consideration of this request, and please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions. Respectfully, John Gallagher, Fire Chief.
I move.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Matusek, supported by clerk Meltzer. Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Matusek?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 16, variance to Chapter 1470 Drainage Ordinance, 23207 Dale Allen.
Dear honorable board members, the Department of Public Services received a request for a review of a plot plan located at 23207 Dale Allen. The applicant, Giambanco Building Company, provided signed and sealed plans for an engineering review. Our consulting engineer, Anderson Eckstein and Westrick, reviewed the plans and identified issues regarding the proposed rear yard drainage system, design, and the limitations of the existing site conditions. An enclosed storm sewer is required in Chapter 1470.065, Items A and C, Clinton Township Drainage Chapter of the Clinton Township ordinances. The Department of Public Services also reviewed the specific issues regarding the site drainage conditions and agreed that a design that varies from the drainage standards would be best suited for these specific circumstances. The proposed solution includes emitting the enclosed storm sewer system and constructing a swell drainage, a swell draining into the Dale Allen right-of-way. A drywall catch basin is proposed for the sump lead discharge. Site-specific issues that justify the need for this variance are due to, one, no pre-existing rear yard enclosed drainage system for storm connection, and, two, lack of a nearby enclosed drainage system in the public road right-of-way to connect a proposed storm sewer. These conditions satisfy the following terms of granting of variance as noted in Chapter 1242.03 of ordinances. This is a special circumstance affecting the situation. Strict application of the provisions of ordinance would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the property. The variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the substantial property rights of the applicant. Granting of the variance will not be unduly detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to others' property in the township. The variance will not have the effect of nullifying the interest and purpose of the ordinance nor violation of the provisions of either state or federal regulations. Director, I'm sorry, Chapter 1470.065, Item H, reverts to Title VI of Part 12 of the codified ordinances, which enables the Director of Public Services the discretion to take variance requests to the Clinton Township Board of Trustees for issuance. Is our recommendation for the Township Board to accept a variance to Chapter 1470.065, Items A and C, of the Clinton Township Drainage Chapter for the proposed development of this property. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Mary Bednar, Director of Public Services.
Questions from the board? I believe this is the second one of these we've done recently.
Right.
We also did one for Habitat, for Humanities, so they could utilize their property better to move a project forward. Good. Further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Moved by treasurer Aiello, supported by...
I'll support.
Or King.
Trustee King. Roll call.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matusek?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Item number 17, capital outlay for fiscal year 2025-26, replacement of heavy equipment hauling trailer for Water and Sewer Department.
Dear members of the board, attached you will find a quote for a replacement heavy equipment hauling trailer for the Water Department. We have contacted the vendor, and they have agreed to honor the pricing offered through the state of Michigan MyDeal Extended Purchasing Program as solicited for a Felling brand model FT40-2LP trailer as outlined in the attached pricing sheet. In accordance with the Township purchasing and bid policies, the recommended motion is to award the purchase for a Felling model F450-2LP heavy-duty equipment trailer to AIS Construction Equipment Corp., MyDeal Contract Number 24... Oh, but there's a lot of zeros there, 158.
Yeah.
For in the amount of $33,296.93. This is a budgeted purchase. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Sincerely, Joe Trestick, Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
Questions from the board?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by...
Are you guys making a motion to approve? Because you guys have to say, you can't just say, I make a motion. So I've heard that several times tonight. I don't know, must be the moon, I don't know. But it's either a motion to approve or...
It is the motion.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I second that.
Okay.
Okay, a roll call.
Trustee Matusek?
Yes.
Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Item number 18, capital outlay, 2025-26, hydraulic breaker with nail point and plate compactor for Water and Sewer Division.
Dear members of the board, attached you will find a quote for a new hydraulic breaker with attachments and new plate compactor with attachments for the Water Department's E60 Bobcat compact excavator. We have contacted the vendor, and they have agreed to honor the pricing offered through the Sourcewell Government Purchasing Program as solicited for a compact construction equipment and related attachments. In accordance with Township purchasing and bid policies, the recommended motion is to award the purchase to Doosan Bobcat North America Inc. through Bobcat of Motor City East, Sourcewell Contract Number 020223-CEC, in the amount of $20,130.18 for a Bobcat hydraulic breaker with attachments and plate compactor with attachments. This is a budgeted purchase. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Sincerely, Joe Trestick, Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
Questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the quote and make the purchase.
Moved by clerk Meltzer, supported by treasurer Aiello. Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Treasurer Aiello?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Yes.
Trustee Matusek?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And item number 19, another capital outlay. These guys wasted no time in getting their request in.
As long as they're budgeted.
Item number 19.
Dear members of the board, attached you will find a quote Dear members of the board, attached you will find a quote for a replacement vehicle for the water department. We have contracted the vendor, and they have agreed to honor the pricing offered through the state of Michigan, MyDeal Extended Purchasing Program as solicited for a Ford 150 Crew Cab 4x4 Hybrid as outlined in the attached pricing sheet. In accordance with township purchasing and bid policies, the recommended motion is to award the vehicle purchase for a Ford 150 Crew Cab 4x4 Hybrid to Gornow Ford in MyDeal Contract Number 24, a lot of zeros, 1193, for $53,857. This is a budgeted purchase. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Joe Tressic, Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
Discussion. Motions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by treasurer Aiello, supported by
I'll support it.
Trustee Wade for the discussion.
Mr. Gilliam.
Ms. Bednar.
This will be our first hybrid that we're actually buying in the fleet to be able to try it out and see if it does save us money and so forth.
I hope that means we're going to get a charging station here.
A hybrid is not, is, charges itself.
Oh, it charges, oh, it does?
It regenerates, it does, you don't need to hook, you don't have to plug it.
I really want a charging station here.
We're going to take baby steps.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Roll call.
Treasurer Aiello.
Yes.
Trustee Wade.
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak.
Yes.
Trustee Quest.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilliam.
Yes.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Okay, before we go on to public comment, I want to take a moment to wish Attorney McGreal a happy birthday. Thank you. Then trustee Wade, you had a public service announcement, and I forgot to recognize you, so
Yes.
I'm doing so now.
I just wanted to put it on the record that Vito Strolas has put an application in for the planning commission. And with all due respect, I know it is your selection, Mr. Supervisor. I've talked to several of the board members, and I know myself, I would endorse him for that position. I think he's a good character person in the community, so.
Two open seats, we'll be acting on those soon, and submitting a recommendation to the board.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I also support what Mr. Wade, trustee Wade, just said. He came to my office and asked for my assistance to help him fill out that application. I followed through with your office, made sure that the application was received, and he was very excited to hear that it was, and he's hoping he'll soon be part of that.
I look, I look forward to hearing from him as well, since I have to submit the recommendation. Captain. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Public comment, Sam Bushell. Three minutes.
Yes, good evening. On Wednesday, the zoning board of appeals has a case on Webster for a home that's at the back of the lot, and they're trying to get a fence in the front yard. And they're not looking for a six-foot privacy fence, but this board, this year, approved a site plan for a single-family residential property in the, in the south end with a six-foot tall, totally screened with cloth. In fact, you demanded the cloth be up kept right to the front. So they have literally a six-foot fence to the front, right to the front yard line and the sidewalls, the 35 feet that none of the rest of us can use. And I think that these people should actually have their variance money. The money they had to pay, it's, it's wrong. Now, this place that you get, that you approved the six-foot, they didn't have to go to, they didn't go to the ZBA. Strictly, this board did it, didn't charge them any fee. And there again, I think one of the obvious reasons that a variance has to be approved is if you're denying, you know, simply properties that are similar, not giving the same use of their property. And this is a clear, clear case of that. I know only trustee, I mean, I should say clerk Meltzer and supervisor Gilliam were on the board when, originally, not too long ago, the board had, people had to come to the board to get a fence in their front yard. And we had a senior citizen woman who had lived in her home for over 45 years. And she had somebody come out and literally paint her three-foot tall, and there again, she was one of the, I was on the back of the lot, three-foot tall fence, and they had to replace a couple pickets. And the building official said, oh, no, if you have to replace the one picket, you got to take it all down. And the board, the board agreed. But then the board also then changed the rule and said that people had to go to the ZBA. Well, in this case, the ZBA has to be aware, if they deny these people or if they charge them money, they're treating them different than other single-family residential properties. And it would be the same as for the woman that had to trim her, one of her, her hedge for the first 17 feet has to be 18 inches or less. And it's just, it's, it's, it seems like there's a constant abuse of single-family residential homes to single-family properties that are being used commercially, because this is obviously being used commercially. I don't think that it's fair to charge people and treat them differently because they're actually a single-family home than somebody on a single-family lot that's using it commercially. And that's, that's my point. I'm sure I'll be there Wednesday. I'm sure the people will be very aware that they're being treated differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Moved by
Support.
clerk Meltzer, supported by treasurer Aiello, I think. I think I heard that.